All right, good evening. I'd like to call the October 20th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Actually, I have enough people here. Well, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, under the announcements, I do have one. Unfortunately, Douglas made the news over the weekend, and not for any what I would consider to be good reasons. As folks following on Facebook, we had a Vietnam War veteran that was displaying a Veterans for Trump sign up on Main Street and was, you know, because I'm not a judge or anything, allegedly accosted by a member of the opposing party, which resulted in an arrest. As a veteran myself, it's troubling, I guess, to see that society has slipped to the point where you can't have a simple disagreement over candidates without violence being the end byproduct. I think that overall behavior and climate like that is not something I ever expected to see in this little town. Pretty disappointed. Pretty sad to see that people are trying to get in the way as how our forefathers had intended for an election to take place. So, people make a decision, and there's a transfer of power peacefully. So, on a positive note, the gentleman did return out to the gazebo today and was met with a tremendous amount of support from the community. And I will say that he did get some various hand gestures from opposing parties, but there was no violence that was involved, and he handled those graciously. But I just, I don't know. I would like to see better from the residents of Douglas. And, you know, like I said, you can have differences of opinions in political matters, but it should never result in physical confrontations or violence over it. It's certainly not how our government was intended. That's what I have. Anybody else have any comments, thoughts? No? All right. That's all I had for announcements. So, we can move into Agenda Item Number One, which is a hearing for the transfer of a liquor license for The Grill on Main and possible votes. In our packet, we have the license checklist and the cover letter for The Grill on Main. We have the entire packet for our review. It's a work in progress. I guess it says they need paperwork from the current owner and providing their insurance for the final approval. Is that about right?
That's about right, yes.
All right. If you guys want to come up, you're more than welcome to.
Do you want us up here, or you can do it from here?
No, come on.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Gerald Chagru. I'm the attorney for Becky Westbury and Larissa Lombardi. They are the owners of Lebec LLC. It's a corporation that we created in order for them to buy The Grill on Main Street. We've gone through, as you can see, a heavy packet of items, and we've been dealing and negotiating with the present owners for some time. I'd like to tell you a little bit about both of them. Many of you may know them. Becky has worked for eight years at The Grill on Main Street, and Larissa has worked there for three years. And they've been in the business, this type of business, the restaurant and liquor business, for some time in their careers. As young as they are, they've got extensive experience. So, I would tell you that they will operate that business in the same way that it has been operated. They have no intention to do anything other than the way it's been operated. They feel it's been a success to the town, and it's been good for the town, and they hope to continue that in that vein. And we are certainly available for any questions that you have.
I really have no questions at all. They've been doing a stellar job on Facebook with the marketing. I've always been a kind of a fan of The Grill. Like, I like it in there.
As am I, yeah.
It's got a good vibe to it, so. As long as they're not changing it, I'm happy.
I'll be happy, yeah.
So, and there's hot turkey sandwiches there, if those show up.
Yeah, I told you, anytime.
All right. So, what do you need from us tonight?
I guess all we need is a vote, your vote. I guess when the other items come in from the cellar, then Suzanne can send it all into the A-B-C-C. The A-B-C-C will take over from there. They will do their own investigation. If there's anything else they want, they will then notify us, and we'll continue on. And then ultimately, the license will come back to you. But all we need is a vote of approval.
So, I'll move that we approve the transfer of the liquor license to the new ownership.
A little second. All right. Somebody's got a noisy mic.
I think it's Hal.
Is it?
It sounds like Hal. Sounds like usual.
You're gonna have to name a drink after Hal, call it the Noisy Mic.
Yeah.
I don't know. Hal, what would you want in a drink named after you?
Uh, the Hal Chaser.
The Hal Chaser?
He died.
All right. I heard the motion was seconded.
It was, yeah.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Keep up the good work, huh?
Yes.
Second Agenda Item, Meeting with Town Moderator on Special Town Meeting. It doesn't seem like all that long ago we met with you on Town Meeting.
It's gonna be like, you know, Bruins hockey, you know, where it's like, oh, it feels like that just ended. By the way, two points for using the word morass. And the chicken wings over at The Grill, fantastic. Absolutely fantastic. Good. If anyone's ever looking for good chicken wings, they're surprisingly good. And I'm very picky on my chicken wings. So, I looked over the meeting, and this is not an annual. I believe this should be, yeah, all right. Yeah, so it was supposed to just be a quick, down, and dirty meeting, and then you guys added like 15 articles, so thanks for that. And, oh, 14 articles. I was really close. And we are still going to keep it quick, down, and dirty. We're not gonna do audiovisual. I'm literally going to try to set up like two mics. Hopefully get the chairs. We're gonna get in there. We're gonna do our business. We're gonna get out of there. While the school did offer to allow us in, again, I don't want to be the one responsible for introducing anything else to the school, including cleaning costs or anything like that. So, I think our best bet at this point is to hopefully have one more, and that's it, outdoor meeting. And, like I said, get in, get out, dress warmly. And, yeah. So, just a couple of quick questions. Just, you know, everything looks pretty straightforward. I am curious about Article VII. Jean's not here.
I think Jean's on.
She's in the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's in.
What happens if this gets voted no again?
There really is no such thing. It's like, it's here, because it has to be here as a formality, but we're in the district.
This could be the last time you see me, if it's voted no.
Yeah. She's going to prison.
And Article 13, I've already approved it. This really should be a housekeeping item. At this time, I understand the finance committee's concern, but we really should vote this. We definitely have a choice. And don't do it without completely refusing. We are a member district.
Yep. I, you know, my guess is that we can vote no, and that'll be a nice little temper tantrum. And then, then what?
I assume they just take it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I assume that we still have to pay it, and then it just creates a nightmare for you.
I know I would have to raise the deficit, because technically, this budget was in deficit. Because I did make, you know, I just came to do the deficit allowance from DOR, and we were doing the month-to-month budgets, but the anticipation that would have been voted at the fall, it didn't happen. So, I would be able to at least raise that on the recount. I would have to ask someone to do the other three payments. I will not pay the November assessment payment until after Town Meeting is due November 2nd, but I won't make that payment until after Town Meeting.
Okay. If you could just research that and let me know what the practicality of a no vote is, I'd appreciate that. Article VIII, I just have to ask, how did we go from 173,000 to 754,000?
The radio project, right?
Yep.
The original project was scoped to be the replacement of portable radios, the handheld units, and mobile units in the cars, and maybe a base radio. The logic being they're aging out, they need to be replaced, and if we add VHF frequency for the fire department, they can port a VHF, and everybody can talk to each other. It wasn't that simple. So, when we went out and actually figured out, well, why is it that these radios can't communicate with one another? It was not a factor only of their age or of the clodiness of having multiple radios in your hand. We don't have the broadcast strength from our monopole on the water tower to give good coverage, reliable coverage, to the entire town. So, the solution is there will be two microwave locations at simulcast and a fiber backhaul to a third location. That's expensive technology. That's the, most of it. The increase is due to that, having to put that equipment up on the towers.
Might as well just do community broadband while we're up there.
Well, but in any case, what we were trying to do is avoid what Sutton and Northbridge and everybody else has had to spend, and you just can't avoid it. Once you get to this point, if they can't hear each other, it's because they don't have the coverage, and that we had to solve that problem.
And given our acreage.
We have a lot of trees, a lot of leaves, a lot of rolling hills. There are spots that are just hard to reach. I didn't bring the coverage map out here with me. The solution colors, it paints the whole town. There might be a very tiny number of places in the far, far reaches of town, and the bottom of a hole in a swamp where they can't be heard, but.
And your house, Keith.
And my house.
No, your house is probably very loud and clear already.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's, it just, there was no need to spend the hundred and whatever it was if it wasn't gonna solve the problem, really.
Okay. And then Article 13, can you tell me what the practical impacts of that are?
Getting us more points in the competitive bid process is the motivation at the moment. Long-term, having a committee on, a commission on disabilities will help us, generally speaking, as we do any building refurbishment, making sure we're sensitive to the needs of all of our citizens. But, as I said, in the short term, it's not enough to have a compliance officer and a policy. You get even more points in the grant, competitive grant process, if you actually have an active commission. We have not, and that's why we've been missing these ADA grants by fractions of a point.
Are they, is it a appointed commission?
Yes.
elected, appointed? All right. So, that was really all the questions I had going through this. As everybody recognized, you know, I tried to streamline the process for the last meeting, and after giving it some more thought, I'm looking to streamline the process even more for this meeting. And the way that I think that I'm going to do that is I'm not gonna have anyone come up and give a motion. I'm going to accept motions from the floor on all of these, as well as a second. And so, my hope is that the motion from the floor will be as printed in the warrant. So, I'm hoping that everything is copacetic, you know, well beyond Town Meeting, which is really incumbent on all of you to get accurate and early. So, the way it'll go is I'll accept the motion from the floor, preferably motion from the floor, you know, as printed in the warrant. I'll accept a second, and then I'll ask if there's any dissent to passing the article. Okay? If there isn't, the article will consider, will be considered to be passed unanimously. If there is, then at that point, I will call up whoever is the presenter and have them make the proponent's speech. And then, you know, we'll go back into the normal process as it normally would be. But what it, you know, it saves a lot of, a lot of jostling between the mic, a lot of, you know, moving, a lot, you know, all that stuff. So, I'm hoping that this, this works for this meeting, and, you know, it gets rid of some of the pomp and circumstance, but hopefully streamlines the meeting while still holding a very efficient one.
And prevents frostbite.
It's only November 14th. I mean, you know, and this will be my shameless plug. I'm waterskiing on December 5th for charity, so, you know, if I can go waterskiing on December 5th, we can hold an outdoor meeting on November 14th.
Famous last words.
Thanks for jinxing us.
Are you going to have people lined up in the audience to make these motions?
As you normally would. So, in other words.
Mostly us.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, you know, if, you know, is there a motion, you know, to pass Article 1, you know, as printed in the warrant? So, no. You know, I mean, it's, if you guys can't do it, then I could do a ventriloquist act, but I'd prefer not to.
I follow you. All right. So, we're actually not going, people are gonna have to do their homework beforehand. I'd like to split it.
People should do their homework beforehand anyway. But, you know, again, what this doesn't do, so if somebody has questions on the article or wants to debate the article, this does not short-circuit that. All they have to do is say, I dissent to passing it unanimously. And then, like I said, then we just, we go back into how we normally would run it. You know, but if there's not any dissent, then we just, we go right past it.
In the HOV lane.
Exactly.
Got it.
Yes. Does that make sense?
Sure. It makes sense.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Can we grab one more ta, if we have to be up front? Can we grab one more table?
We'll have to talk to the school.
Okay. It's just.
There's a $6.75 surcharge.
What's that?
Yeah, we were a little congested the last one, so.
I thought you liked sitting up close to us, though.
Yeah, look at me. Right? That's all.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Which brings us to Item Number Three, a discussion to reconsider the Webster Street bid and possible votes. One of the bidders on the Webster Street project had submitted an objection to our decision on the awarding of the bid, which kind of puts us into a couple of places or options and avenues as to how we can address this. I have talked with Town Council back and forth as to what our optionings are. One option would be is we stand pat on the decision rendered and feel comfortable with our votes as presented, and if they wish to appeal, then the next step for them would go to Superior Court to appeal it. The other option that we have this evening is we can vote to reopen the conversation and then reconsider. We'd need a motion to actually reconsider the awarding of the bid. If that's the will of the board to go that route, the Town Administrator sent us a memo earlier that actually outlines the bid itself, the scoring process, how points should be evaluated, and we would go line item by line item off of the original proposal and issue new scores, tally them up, and render a second decision. So, I would leave that for some discussion amongst the board as to what the appetite would be, on which avenue we would like to pursue.
I don't like, you like talking about weed, so go ahead.
I'm such a weed fan. I don't see for the board of the town any advantage to a motion or a vote to reconsider. It doesn't at all, Kevin laid out, I think, the options very well, but it doesn't negate or interfere with anyone's right to go to court, no matter what we do. If we vote to reconsider, no matter the outcome of that vote, instead of one aggrieved party as we have here today, we may end up with two. We may have doubled our liability and doubled the problems for the town. And in any event, no matter what we vote, if we were to vote again, and I don't see any basis to vote again. But if we were to vote again, we are not excluding anyone, either party, from going to court and appealing the outcome. I feel it was a fair process, speaking for myself. Others may differ. I don't have any issues with the process, but my responsibility here is to the town, and I think reconsidering or trying to go back and do a do-over on the vote is not in the best interest of the town.
I think that was, well said, David.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I agree. I'm not sure what we accomplished. Yeah, I felt comfortable with the way I stood my issue.
Yeah. That was gonna be the question I had, is the board satisfied with how he voted? And if so, then what are we doing here? I'm comfortable with how I voted. I gave it my thought and level best, and the vote was the vote, and don't see it changing much, to be honest.
So, I would look for a, I guess we'd wanna just put on the books a motion as to what our decisions are.
I will use the opportunity to maybe have a larger discussion on what it is we want out of the marijuana industry in the town of Douglas.
That should probably be separate from this, I would think.
Okay.
Because I don't think that's what the proponent came in here looking for, so.
All right. Well, let's do that first, and.
And do we need a motion?
No.
We don't need any motion?
No. Parliamentally, you're standing pat, you're standing pat.
Yeah, the motion's been made, and, you know, voted on it.
I just wanted to check and make sure for procedural.
Procedure is always good.
All right. So, for the record and stenographer, the decision of the Board of Selectmen is unanimous to stay pat with our current decision based off the awarding of the land.
Rather than a vote, I think it's probably the feeling of the general consensus of the board, after all the members have spoken.
All right.
Then maybe splitting hairs, but.
It's okay.
Okay.
I don't have many hairs to split, so.
No offense intended.
Yes.
So, my question is, it's not a matter of recalculating, it's a matter of taking off the points that were put on that weren't supposed to be put on. In the criteria line, some members put bonus points that were not allowed to be part of the discussion. And that's all that we're looking for, is to take off the so-called bonus points that were put on.
I don't believe there were any bonus points.
Yes, there were.
Teresa? Teresa, I'm not going down this road with you again.
I'm not gonna have you talk to me like the way you do. We're having a discussion. Please have a discussion.
You are sitting here as a guest of the Board of Selectmen. You are not a Douglas resident. Giving you the right to even speak in these meetings is a courtesy, not a right.
That's not true, because we own property in this town.
You certainly do, but you can't go to Town Meeting and vote, nor can you cast your ballot here. We are elected officials.
I didn't come here to argue with you.
Teresa?
I'm not gonna be here and threaten you.
Teresa, you're not going to do here what you do on the planning board.
That's what you keep saying, but you're not letting me speak. You keep speaking over me and not allowing me to say what I started to say, that we finished what I was saying.
What you were saying is that there was bonus points awarded.
Yes, there are.
There are no bonus points that were awarded on there.
I have the four cards here.
It could very simply be they just put it in the wrong line item sitting there.
Nope.
Teresa, at the end of the day, the discussion is, our vote stands pat, it's been awarded to Flying Goose.
Okay, so these bid sheets, I'm just gonna have to go to the Attorney General's office.
Have at it. That's fine.
And that attitude is what the problem is. I came here to discuss something with you, and you.
Teresa, you don't come in to discuss things with anybody. You are more than welcome to, the door's that way.
And the police chief is on.
That's fine.
And you're being threatening.
I'm not being threatening. I'm telling you, the door is that way.
That's a threat.
Please feel free to use it.
And that's a threat.
That's not a threat, ma'am.
Yes, it is. We came here for discussion.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not.
So, it's not a public hearing. If you continue to disrupt the public hearing, we can have the cops come up and remove you.
So, we'll take.
There's no need to make a scene.
Have at it.
That's your right.
I have the originals. Cops are the originals.
May I speak?
Yes, you may, Tracey.
Hi, I'm Tracy Sharkey for the actual bidder, Lewis Casino. So, we received the tally sheets from Suzanne, so I just wanna clarify that there weren't, there wasn't an additional scoring column added to the 200 points allotment for the score on those tally sheets. So, the bid, the bid was out of 200 points, correct?
Correct.
So, the way that the board scored it, there was points, 100, up to 100 points from the highest bidder. And then there was four categories. So, on the tally sheets, it's showing some people placed an additional column. Have you reviewed the tally sheets? There were two, there were two tallies that had an extra bidding column on the incremental line of the score.
Yes, I did see a couple of the sheets that did have where somebody had put a score sitting up at the, next to the margin.
Right. So, I just wanted to clarify that it was out of 200, then you could get five extra bonus points, so that would be 205. So, one of the bid sheets was 207. So, I'm just looking for clarification from the board that some, two board members put an additional score instead of, you know, five total scores, there was six total scores on two tally sheets.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll address that.
Please.
As Teresa pointed, I was trying to think of your last name. As Teresa pointed out, you have appeal rights. If you think the sheets were improperly filled out or improperly added or improperly anything, for that matter, I suggest you avail yourself of the appeal. I think the board has talked, and I think all the board members have heard, have been heard from, and have put their opinion on the record that they're not likely to change their, or they're not willing to change their position. As Mr. Wulch pointed out, this is not a public hearing. So, nobody has the right to speak. And I think what's evident here, and I'm trying to be as fair as possible, is nothing is going to change here tonight. So, if you believe that the sheets were improperly tabulated, you may be correct, okay? Your remedy is not here in this room. Your remedy is somewhere else, either with the Attorney General or, and I haven't looked at it quite frankly, the Attorney General or a justice of the Superior Court.
Right.
So, I don't think that, I don't think that us discussing this any further and explaining what the board did and didn't do, I don't think that's fruitful, because I think it's, we've made it clear, we're not going to change anything.
Right. The board does have the opportunity to reconsider it if there was an error on understanding the chart. So, there should have been one score for the bid price, and then four additional scores.
And I think those are points that are best raised in whatever appellate rights you choose to exercise.
Okay, so simply, a simple mathematical error, not based on.
If that's your allegation, then we're gonna be standing in front of a judge at some point debating that.
All right, so can I get confirmation from the board that two people added an additional scoring column to their, to their scores?
I don't, I mean, I think we've been over this. I think the board's feeling is, and I don't wanna speak for the board, that's not my position, nor anybody's, but I think we just had a discussion on this, and nobody is likely to change their position. If the lady or the entity, the other lady, feels that something was done wrong, I think, my opinion, their appellate rights lie either with the Superior Court, or I heard her say the Attorney General. And I think that's where they should exercise those rights.
Thoughts, anyone else?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Attorney Daniel Glishman with the law firm Prince Lobel Ty, here on behalf of Flying Goose. May I just have a brief word with the, to the board through you?
Sure.
I just, very briefly, and I understand the board has already made their position clear, but I just wanted to state the position of Flying Goose, which is that they have absolutely relied to their detriment on the board's actions on October 6th, and we would respectfully request that. proposed by the members, and allow us to move forward on this development expeditiously. So thank you. Happy to provide some additional information if the board would like to hear it. I know one of the members of the team is in attendance with the meeting tonight, and he'd be happy to provide a little additional information, but just wanted to get myself and our opinion on the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, yes.
Could I please get the answer to my previous question? It's very black and white, and I just, you know, we have a very much project coming into Douglas, and we hopefully will award the bidder correctly, but I just don't want this to happen again, and then you tell the person that it was a mathematical error that you added in scoring column, and that they win, they lose the bid. Like, that project is much, much larger than this project.
Completely, and I understand the position that you're taking, Tracy. I don't, I don't necessarily think it was a mathematical error that was done, or anything that was being added. I think it was a matter of recording points in an incorrect column. But I don't think any, that's as, and I mean, I can't divine what other people were doing on those. I know how I filled out my sheet.
Right.
So, and I know no additional points were awarded on my side.
Unfortunately, there was four columns, and a couple of people put a score under the directions for the columns. So I don't know what they were judging. If it was just a personal judgment, then there's gonna be a bigger problem. Because Louis Casino is the bidder, and I want, and I just wanna make that for the record.
Yeah, I, I understand, duly noted.
So can I be able to get the answer to that, that question that I asked?
So, I'm not sure how to.
I guess it's best expressed this way, from my point of view as vice chair. This is not a public hearing. We're not here to answer questions about how the bid process went. I understand you have concerns, and that's fine. I would probably have concerns if I were in your shoes. The place to raise those concerns and question people is not here in front of this board at this time. You have rights under the law to exercise. We, the board has discussed its feelings, and I think all five members of the board have made them clear. So I think that if you still have concerns, and it's clear to me that you do.
A non-answer is an answer also, you know that.
You could take it that way if you like.
Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, so we can move on to item number four, which is the HCA request for Flying Goose and possible votes. Which, I have a letter here from Rich Ranone, owner of Flying Goose. Please let this letter serve as a formal request to be heard on the 10/20 Board of Selectmen's agenda meeting, or the next available meeting in order to be considered for an adult-use retail marijuana host community agreement at lots 205-2, 205-3 in the town of Douglas, in response to the Board of Selectmen's vote that took place on 10/6. Sound about right?
That's what I'm reading.
And we have Mr. Ranone here, correct?
I'm Mr. Pierre Casavian.
Oh, hi, sorry.
Richard Ranone is on TV. Would you like to use the speaker?
Yeah, you can.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Great, fantastic.
I picked the wrong week to quit smoking.
Oh, yeah.
I figured you'd have a ball of that nicotine gum about the size of a golf ball by now.
I'm doing good.
Ooh-sah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Zen. No, there's this little clear patch on my shoulder that I can feel burning at this point, 'cause I think your body starts drawing it in when you need it.
Little smoke coming off the shoulder.
Yeah, that could be.
That's funny.
Anyway, so you'd like to enter into a host community agreement on the property, recently won in the land bid?
Yes, sir.
That was succinct. So, I guess the, I know it sounds like a terrible legal question, we can still continue to move forward, even considering what's going on regarding the other bidder on the project, correct?
That's not a question to address to me. I think it's, Town Council should provide you advice. I don't, there's no such thing as a stead.
No, unless the court would order one.
Unless the Superior Court gives you one. But, time is of the essence, so we should take it as far as we can. We could certainly do an HCA. We haven't even met yet on cultivation. I mean, factoring HCA for 116 years.
That's correct.
We should, we should address all of these things soon, so that at least we're all continued to move forward. And we'll, we'll have Town Council give us his thoughts on the next steps for the PNS.
Okay. So would it make sense, like, our HCAs are pretty much boilerplate on retail and on cultivation. There's not a lot of changing that we do with those.
That's correct. We don't change the language much. We want everybody to be on the same foot.
That's right.
And then, who did we designate off of the board that was gonna work through the cultivation one?
I know who it was not.
Wasn't you?
No.
Was it Hal? Were you gonna work through?
I think you took my name in vain.
I would never take your name in vain, Hal.
All right.
It's nothing regional, Hal.
Hands off.
I'd like Dave to work with me, he's had more experience than I have, but.
I am, I'm short of time right now. If you have a question or whatever, feel free to, to reach out, but I really don't have a lot of time.
Okay.
And Hal, I can, I can work with you on it too. I sat in on a lot of the meetings with the first HCA that we had written. So would it make sense for you and I to meet up with the folks from Flying Goose and just get this nailed up?
Sure.
Does that work?
Sounds great to me, absolutely.
All right, and what we'll try and do is just get the cultivation and the recreational ones done all in one meeting, and that way we're not.
All three, the retail, manufacturing, and cultivation?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Get them all done in one shot, so that way we're not wasting a lot of time.
Love it. 'Cause we already hit the ground running, we started hiring, engaging consultants, you know, the variety of consultants that are gonna be needed for the Webster Street project. We relied heavily on the vote that we got on October 6th, so we're moving forward. We just kinda need to get caught up with some paperwork, like the purchase and sales and the host community agreement.
All right.
We're ready to close on the property as soon as possible, too.
Excellent.
Does the town have a target date of when to close on the property at this time, or is it before 12:31 ideally for us?
Well, yeah, I mean, like I say, it depends on Rich's advice to the, to the board. If, if he gives us the all-clear, then we move forward with all haste. I don't know that this is necessarily all that complicated, a PNS at all.
Sure.
So, this is raw land. But if he says hold back for X period of days, then I guess you have to hold back for X period of days. I'm kinda waiting on his.
There's no boundary line disputes, meets and bounds, no issues like that.
No.
And you're aware of, cognizant of this cloud that's currently floating over this issue, so business decisions, you know, might be made.
Sure.
With that in mind?
Yeah, apologize to my fiery temper. I blame it on my liking.
I like it.
You don't apologize to him.
I don't like getting angry. What I'll do is reach out to Rich tomorrow and see if I can get some counsel from him, and then send an email out to the rest of the board, so that way we're all aware of it.
I think you go on forever with the board's forecast. I think you have to do something.
I don't.
You have a lot of time, and you can't just hold up everybody's.
Since you raised the issue, you know, we've heard from the other bidder that they're unhappy, and that they feel that there are irregularities in the point scoring system. They have rights, and I think that point got beaten to death. I don't think that, number one, that we as a board on behalf of the town should hold anything up, and, and number two, we heard from Flying Goose's attorney, who made it very clear that they've relied on their, to their detriment on our vote. So I think that holding anything up because we feel something might happen in the future is probably not the way to go. Obviously, if the other party chooses to avail themselves of their appeal rights, and somebody with the authority orders us to do something, that's different.
Yeah, I'll get a rendering from Attorney Vaughn tomorrow, and then we'll just go from there. And why don't we plan a day like, actually, I can do this now.
Probably the sale agreement at the same, same time we're doing the HCA.
Yeah, I mean, I've.
I'm sorry, Attorney Glishman again with Prince Lobeltai on behalf of Flying Goose. My office is currently in the process of preparing the purchase and sale agreement, and I will certainly be happy to connect with Town Council and discuss appropriate next steps as well, if that's useful.
All right, yeah, I was just gonna say to, to come in and actually go over the, the HCAs, how does the 27th at noon sound here at Town Hall?
Just talking about the PNS for a little while.
Yeah, for the PNS, I'd have to talk to Rich and get a, a date on that side of it, but at least getting the HCAs done.
Okay, yeah, let's get them done.
What day of the week is that?
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm great, I'm not sure of the time of day yet.
I was gonna say like noon?
Yeah, afternoon would be best for me, but I can make whatever time work for the board.
How would 1 o'clock work for you?
1 o'clock, perfect.
Does 1 o'clock work for you, Hal?
I believe so. If it doesn't, I'll let everybody know, but it's just the 1 o'clock on the 27th.
Yep.
Is there a draft HCA available that we could circulate to our team?
Yes.
So we can review it prior to the meeting?
Yeah, we have one.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Was that fast enough?
Absolutely. That's the speed we like to move at, at Flying Goose.
Flying.
Flying Goose, right? Get it done.
Excellent.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Maybe not tonight, but I would like to have a larger discussion on the marijuana industry in town.
I didn't mean to shut that down, but I think it was outside the scope of, of what the lady requested being on the agenda, so.
And I think that's something we probably should put on the agenda.
I've lost track of the HCAs and who's got what, and what's out there, and.
You have an HCA with us now.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really, how many, the idea that we had five on a warrant is silly to me now. So we, if we could, Mr. Chairman, put that on, I'd like to further vet that.
You wanna do that the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. I'm gonna put broad pot discussion. That work?
Cover it all.
Big bowl.
All right, next.
All right, so we're on to the solar pilot for the Oak Street Solar Farm and possible votes.
This agreement was approved by town meeting, so I think all you're doing is voting against it, sign.
Works for me.
Motion to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Six, approved conservation. I'm sorry?
I'm saying thank you.
Oh.
So, from, so.
Oh, okay.
BWC.
You're welcome.
On behalf of the BLC, White Rock, I will be.
Oh, okay. So I think we were just getting ready to actually agree to execute the pilot agreement.
Yes, no, that sounds good. I, I figured, I just wanted to see your issue and any questions.
No, we're all good, but thank you for, thank you for hopping on tonight.
No problem. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. Okay, we're gonna approve the Conservation Commission's acceptance of a land gift.
My lovely visage can appear on camera. My understanding of the process, this is generated by the statute. Concom has voted to accept the land, but their vote must meet with your approval before the transfer can go along. How am I doing, Attorney Gavels?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Exactly. Exactly, we went the wrong route first, probably, given the, the information that we have now, presented to the Conservation Commission originally, since that's who we thought had the approval, the authority to accept the, the land. So, you, gentlemen, are the correct board to present it to, and then I guess falls into Conservation's hands as far as the maintenance and oversight of the land. Concom has agreed to accept that, pending your approval.
Make a motion that we gladly accept the donation of five acres of open space land to the townspeople of Douglas.
I will second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have to ratify the police and firefighters.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Take care.
Ratify the police and firefighters union COLA MOUs and possible votes.
In an abundance of formality, we've signed an MOU to retract a prior MOU. I think we've discussed this quite a bit, but it's what the Finance Director has requested, and all I do is comply, every day.
I had a comment, and I will now withhold some comment. Motion to approve the MOU revoking the prior MOU as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That applies to both, the police shooting and the fire union?
Of course.
I'm sorry.
Everybody's nodding.
I would amend my motion to say that the MOU applies to both our police and fire unions.
And I'll second your amended motion.
Thank you.
The motion has been made, amended, seconded, and amended again. So, is there any further discussion after that? Anybody wanna amend anything else? No?
Not here.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Review and sign the November 14th special town meeting warrant and assigned motions. How unfortunate, everyone is here.
Tim, you wanna step up for a moment?
Gotta step off.
We have no one to just throw everything at today.
Exactly.
All right, well, let's go down through the 15 articles that are sitting on here and figure out who would like to do what, when, where, and why. Or do we just wing it, because they're kinda trying to pass everything off of the floor unless there's a proponent speech required?
Do we have to have assigned readers for each motion, or can we?
You really don't.
We don't.
No, he, that's what he said tonight.
Yeah, why don't we swing it?
Yeah, we just wanna go over what's in the warrant, 'cause it has.
Yeah.
Expanded since our last conversation. Article one is budget transfers. I think the tree warden we've already been over, we just, we, every time the wind blows around here, we have power losses resulting from more trees, so John's asking for 50,000, that's the biggest ticket item. The other new, two items here I would consider, ah geez, let's just go through. You get some minute-taker adjustments. Civil defense wages is, is the last open question, that is part of the contract conversation between the town and the chief, fire chief. The Finance Committee needs a little bit more money for their mailing. We need postage here at the town, these are all small items. Increased building wages by 38,908, what is that? Our building official will be departing town service to take a full-time position in another town. Some time ago, when the town of Douglas was experiencing significant budget difficulties, and there were whatever personality conflicts with the then-building commissioner and members of the Board of Selectmen, the position was, was reduced to a part-time position, and And it made sense, frankly, because there just weren't a lot of real estate developments occurring in town. Everything was held up by recession. We are not in that situation now. So the curve, the pipeline, if you will, is so full of building permit applications and inspection requirements. We do have 90 days to do a building permit. We have very little time to turn around an inspection request. That's a right to get that inspection done within a fixed period of time. A part-timer works more than what he is paid for, frankly. There are days when he'll have 10 or more inspections in the field on the days when he is in the office. And he's also pushing along the e-permitting process. There is just too much going on in this position right now to try to get it done on a part-time basis. We need to be responsive to economic development projects when they come to town. Whether it's a zoning inquiry or a building code inquiry, we need to be able to give them answers. And if they can only get answers on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're not exactly business friendly in that context either. Uh, so that's what's in form, I just don't think we'll be struck by lightning twice and we'll get somebody as qualified as Mark to take the position part-time knowing the demands on on there. Um, at this full-time, this is an M35 wage, uh, so it's management level three, step five. We'd be still a little bit below the neighboring communities, but we'd at least be in the same, we'd be within a couple thousand of the the next lowest community, uh, which is appropriate given the size of the towns. Sutton gets paid a little bit more, he has a lot of seniority, he's really been in the job for a long time, so he's at their top step. Uh, we're not coming in at that top step number. Uh, the cemetery's got an additional mowing. Tax title, that's coming from the treasurer, she must need that money for legal assistance. Economic development coordinator wages, what is that? As we have gone through the the competition for Dragonfly, and I'll update you on that later. You know, it's apparent to me that I can't do all of this stuff. Uh, capital budget and operating budget, being your personnel director, being involved with the pandemic response, and now we're gonna add coordinating all this, planning committee, Concom, zoning board, building commissioner, all the applications, streamlining everything, getting it everything done. Um, if you want it done right, we're gonna need a little bit of help. I think it should be completely contingent upon the existence of a project. This is not a permanent thing, but that assistance, that person who pulls it all together, needs to answer to me. Because the charge in the Town Administrator Act is to work with the boards and commissions to coordinate their activities. Um, so this is a consensus, uh, of members of the administration that we need the assistance. The community development department is already very busy. And once we start with the bridge replacement on Cedar Street, there's a hands-on issue there as well. Uh, I rely upon the town engineer for assistance with grant applications and a number of important functions. And he doesn't have the time either, and more importantly, he's one of the people in the regulatory chain. And so I don't want to put that burden on him to coordinate because he's supposed to be coordinating a certain amount of that activity already. Uh, or is deeply involved in the so-called weeds of the regulatory activity. Article two, prior year bill, $278. Only thing strange about prior year bills is you need a really big super majority to pass it. At town meeting in September, the town passed the creation of an assistant chief position in the fire department and it was assigned a position on the compensation table, M4. Part of this was conversation with labor council as to how to deal with a second-in-command in public safety if you cannot negotiate a contract under state law. The workaround, because it it started, it it got stuck on the police lieutenant because the police lieutenant's a different position. It's a position you've had for many years and there's, there's past practice behind how we compensate and how we recruit that individual. So, being mindful of a number of things, including the Pay Equity Act. These positions can't be so far apart. They need to be moved together. So we went back at it with Brian and said, can we rewrite or add to the personnel bylaw to authorize the town to enter into a relationship around employment that has elements of contract but in many cases defaults to the personnel bylaw so that they're treated the same way as all other management-level officials of the town? There are things about being a public safety second-in-command that are unique to public safety. You have a uniform, you may drive a vehicle to emergency responses, it might be your own vehicle, it may be a town-issued car. We need to allow for those things to be dealt with lawfully without, uh, trying to refer that back to the personnel bylaw because it's, it was never contemplated because it was always that the union contract and the SOPs would deal with those issues. They don't anymore if you have these second-in-command. So, we've worked with Brian on this a couple times and we're pretty comfortable with this proposed bylaw amendment. So there would be a written offer of employment that will lay out the terms of employment, a very brief contract, a detailed job description, and that is how that person would be employed. But we're gonna pull them away from the table so as not to be constrained by the table. Couple more, it's been an allergy week, so I'm starting to struggle, but for many years, salaries in municipal police departments were largely base salary and then there was the so-called Quinn bill, which established educational incentives. And when that was gone away from, there were remnants in these contracts. We have to recognize that in order to promote internally, if you set a base salary that is too low, nobody's gonna want the job. They're gonna want their education incentive to stay, they're leaving the union, they're leaving the protections of the union, how do you get somebody to step into the job? And tying it to M4 just made it too rigid. We need a range of salaries that we might put somebody in, so if they have a bachelor's, it would be X, if they come in with a master's. The thing is, you wouldn't get any additional education incentive after that. Your salary would reflect your qualifications and experience and it would stay that way. Um, I don't know who you're looking at, Mr. Vice Chairman, but you're distracting me.
I apologize.
That's the point of Article three.
It wasn't you.
Article four, I believe.
Matt, just real quick, this is the first, literally the first time I'm seeing this. Your items A through F, do you really need to codify all that?
Yes, because those are items that are above and beyond the personnel bylaw in the town. So if you're going to extend that benefit to that employee, you have to have a source of authority to do so.
If, right, keyword if. Although as it's read, they get all that.
They're not supposed to get any of this if it's not in the personnel bylaw. You see what I'm saying?
Which is this amendment, right?
So, all of our management staff is subject to the personnel bylaw and the personnel policies and procedures of the town of Douglas. So the town engineer, the finance director, anybody who doesn't have a contract. The state has allowed municipalities to negotiate contracts if the town wishes to depart from the strictures of the bylaw and the policies and procedures. So what we're doing here is adding these two positions to that category of people with, to whom we give benefits above and beyond the personnel bylaw for some specific reason, the reasons I just enumerated.
So, I assume the lieutenant in the police department had a town-issued vehicle in the past, I think I saw him driving.
I think you're right.
That. Right, so it's just, it's a, it's a little more than a break even, I think, but, all right.
Article four, I don't know why it says adopt slash re-adopt, can only be one of the two. Uh, but this is for the purposes of creating an OPEB trust. I think it's there as a re-adoption, I'm not sure why, um, I don't know why she's asking for it. Free cash to the OPEB account because the OPEB account already exists, so.
I'm not familiar with.
I don't know, I I would have to look up the statute and I'm not sure why. Maybe it's a designation of the trustee.
I think we're moving from an account to a trust.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
And I think that would probably give us more flexibility in disbursement, would be my guess.
Yeah. Um, I think it would also, I have asked numerous times, what is the investment policy around the OPEB account? And because it's not a trust, I don't think there, the investment policy applies to it. It's an account right now. And whatever policies we're using for, static accounts is what we're using. But if it's in the OPEB trust, investments could be made in appropriate types of securities to, you know, maybe get some additional interest. I think some of this money, if I've listened to Cheryl carefully in the past, is held in CDs, you know, term accounts. Article five, $27,000 from free cash to OPEB. Article six, from free cash to stabilization, it's only $10,000. Article seven, previously discussed, is the Blackstone Valley Vocational School balance. That was voted down at annual town meeting. Article eight is the capital budget for fiscal '21. We would normally do this at the annual town meeting, we're gonna do it in the special town meeting in the fall. Only two projects are earmarked and I think right now we're disclosing in great detail. Some of this project were funded already, but they were more expensive, so we're adding money.
Does this enjoy the support of the Capitol Committee?
Yes, this is their document, so it took us a while to work to it, but we got to it. And then there's their plan for five years, which is really, last year's plan slighted up a year because we're holding back, given the pandemic and the revenue shortfall at the state level. Cedar Street taking, you see the values there?
I, um, um.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I agree too much about that. We see the topic, like the president, uh, on the, on the, the total value of the Cedar Street taking at this point will be carried out by the town. And the corresponding dollar value, uh, will be growing according.
Did you say 6,000?
Is it just me or does Bill sound like Charlie Brown's teacher right now?
Yep.
I'm got this weird thing on, man, I can't hold.
He's got the wire.
His phone is his microphone.
Oh.
All right, but still, it's, you know, this is not earth-shattering, right? So this was a, an a certified appraiser did it this time, it's not a tax assessment value, so.
Did he bring that Franken drive home? Is that what happened?
I think he walks around with it on his back.
Bill, that 20 million terabyte homemade hard drive that you carry in a backpack is interfering with your audio quality.
It's RF. Oh, God. On Gilboa Street for Article 10, changing the zoning from RA to industrial. Article 12, stormwater system compliance, year three, funding of $35,000. Article 13 is the adoption of 48J Commission on Disabilities. Article 14, waterways, which is a transfer from the waterways receipts reserved for appropriation account to the dive rescue team account. And Article 15 is the Personnel Compensation Chart amendments. So we had to move the assistant chief back over to the call category at PS5 and the economic development project coordinator to miscellaneous four. Why miscellaneous? The compensation chart is established where management grades have to have an employee under management, it's not anticipated the coordinator would be when wanting to hit the right pay, pay scale soar at MS4. That's the warrant for the fall.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need a motion to sign?
I think you're closing it tonight, right?
I believe so.
Just closing, that's it?
Well.
I think we have to sign it.
I think you have to sign it tonight. Yeah, you're awful close, you're only three weeks away, you gotta post it.
Move that we close, close and sign the warrant as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, I will just say, well, there's a lot in here that hadn't really been discussed, um, dropped on us in the, I would say, the 11th hour. It's the second time we've done this and I feel like we're making decisions real, you know, it's kind of on the fly. You know, I trust Matt, I think Matt does a good job, but, um, in some ways I feel like we're, at this point, just rubber stamping things.
Well, if you want, we can go into further detail on any one of the.
Well, literally digested 30 minutes ago, I probably have additional ideas tomorrow or questions, but, uh, far be it for me to stop the wheels of government.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry, Sleckman, but I'm taking slight offense at your comments. Look, we're doing the best we can, under a tremendous amount of time pressure, to do the things the town needs to do. But it's just a request, we're only asking people. I mean, if you're opposed to it, you're opposed to it. But, you know, rubber stamping, I mean, can we not use the, you know, that's not the spirit of this. The spirit of this is the stuff we need, we're gonna ask you for it. You know, if the answer's no, it's no, but these are recommendations made in good faith about what the town needs to do to take the next step on some important projects.
And it's taken at that, I'm just saying it's literally 40 minutes ago, we received some of this. Right, you take offense if you want, but the reality is, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I, I don't take offense if you feel rushed, I take offense at the language. It's, it's like, you know, if, we, we could just say the hell with it and wait until May for some of this stuff.
I mean, these are items here that are gonna go before the townspeople, correct?
Always, sure.
Right, so I don't think it's, it's, um, our vote to approve it even if rushed, to use, I think was your term, if I'm right. Um, the people still get to vote on it. We're gonna post the warrant timely and they still get to vote on it. So, while we might be rushed, and I'm not arguing the point, the townspeople won't be when they vote on it.
Sure.
So there's, you look at that as a built-in safety valve, maybe?
It always is, yeah.
This requires a roll call vote, I believe.
It does?
No.
I believe so, doesn't it? It wants. Usually they roll call vote on it.
Jane, you came in?
I have the sound volume, I couldn't hear anything in the last couple, um, I hope, oh, I can't hear from up here.
Huh. Guess it doesn't need a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And again.
You know, we're just putting it on a warrant that we're asking.
Right, I think the townspeople also elected me to lead and and I'm not feeling that necessarily, but, um, maybe we'll lead a town meeting again. What are you gonna do?
Might be raining in 22 degrees at town meeting. Might be the quickest town meeting in American history.
Uh, the other thing is, as a town gets busier, Sleckman, Bonin, maybe it would be wise for the board to say there has a deadline when you want to close the warrant for your purposes.
Sure.
And that will smooth all of this over because nothing can come in. But as far as I'm concerned, I, I will go up to the very last second every time I have the opportunity to get the people to vote for something if the information that's coming to me on a random basis is, needs to be acted on. But I, I do think, I, I also personally feel this way. I'm spending my time rushing to get this done, this close to the deadline. So I would rather have the board say, in future, the timeline will be hard and fast, no less than five weeks before you expect town meeting to occur, it has to be closed up, period. And that way, all the department heads know this, we can't come in the last minute with an appraisal on a, a thing. If it doesn't get done, then you just have to have another meeting or wait until the next scheduled meeting.
So we have to post three weeks before the town meeting, correct?
Well, yeah, I think you've got to give the finance committee the time to do its work, to consider and make recommendations. And then it goes into their flyer and the flyer has to be mailed timely.
Right.
The people get the same amount of notice every single town meeting, which is when they get the flyer, unless they're watching these meetings.
What if we stepped it back X amount of weeks from that three to?
I would love that, I would love to stop having this rolling deadline.
Yeah, I've been, we've been on this board long enough, it happens, it does, it just seems to be one on top of another, it's, you know. I mean, there was a time in which, jeez, we, the fire chief couldn't get a, it was absurd that the town would pay for, for a vehicle for him. And now we're, the assistant's getting one, right? I mean, this is. I mean, this is how fast this government is changing. And, you know, just giving an example, and not to pick on the chief here, but the civil defense wages, it's five question marks. Is that $50,000, or is that, why, $10,000?
Well, I'm going to fill that number in. No, it's not. It's a stipend. It's just that at $350, it wasn't really respectful of the role.
And I always thought that civil defense, it was laughable what we funded. But you're going to insert that, and that's what town meeting will take, and whether or not the Selectmen actually contemplating what that number is and why that number should be, just didn't take place. So, none of this is personal. It's just, this is what I see.
The biggest thing is, is what we're all kind of taking out of contents, is this entire year, like, has been completely empty. We haven't done any of the things that this board would normally do, including meet in person. You know, I mean, it's, what's happened, and it's not just our town, it's everybody. We're no longer doing anything preventatively. Everything that we do is reactive.
Reactive.
It's reactive to what's the virus doing this week, and what's going to be closed next week, and what are the schools doing, and then how are we going to respond to the schools, and what does this mean for collective bargaining? You know, it's, I mean, to say that this is like a norm or things like that, it's a matter of we're reacting to the circumstances that we're unfortunately stuck in, just like everybody else. And I think that, I agree, we should be able to try and put a three-week primer on before when we need to do things, but who's to say that there's not another pandemic or another situation that happens? Because let's just face it, you know, I mean, 2021 could be like, yeah, here, hold my beer. You think you did a good job 2020? We'll screw you up even worse. We'll end up with fire-breathing spotted salamanders that keep everybody trapped in their homes.
That's what the.
That's very anime of you.
Concern is valid. I don't have any problem, I mean, we can dispute the language all day long, but I think the concern is valid. And if we were to address it, we should probably address it as like a board policy.
Yeah.
Because I was just going to say what Kevin said, I mean, these are interesting times. Hopefully, there are no fire-breathing spotted salamanders or anything else like that.
If there is, it's your house.
But we've been playing reactive ball the entire year because of this, and our normal, somewhat ponderous way of considering these things has fallen by the wayside. And I don't think it's a result of anything other than the fact that he's overworked, to be blunt, and we're all trying to juggle way too many balls at the same time. So everything just ends up getting done at the last minute. It's like when you fall behind at work or even at home. Everything gets done at the last minute, doesn't get the attention that you spend on it. And I think that's really what's happening here, which is not in any way to belittle your point, because I think it's a valid point. We should not be, you know, approving things out of hand.
But all it is, is access to the warrant.
Correct.
And a decision.
The safety valve is still there.
It's, I can guarantee you, if you pulled an agenda from my former employer's town council, when I was town administrator there, and compare it to what they're doing today, there's no comparison. I like to be busy. I push my department heads to fix problems and to come into this process with an agenda of things they need to fix. There are towns, though, that at annual town meeting, they have 70 articles. I think may have even have been Oxbridge a couple of years back, had many, many, many articles on the warrant, just because events come into place, and in this case, it's economic development. Almost every time we turn around, there's some roadblock in the zoning code or some vagueness that gives people concern. They're about to invest millions of dollars in a piece of property. They want to know that the code is clear enough then what their rights are. So they come and they ask for amendments. And that's what a lot of this is driving a lot of this backstory. The Capitol Committee does meet. The Capitol article is typical. These transfers are relatively typical. Changes in personnel, I'll tell you what I feel like I'm struggling with. Your compensation table was a neatly well-packaged item for a long time. You had the same employees marching through step one, step two, step three for a very long time. You have a lot of people have been very loyal to the town, and their relative position hasn't changed very much at all. I mean, if you knew you were an office assistant, you knew where the line was drawn between you and the next person up. What we're seeing now, though, is the Pay Equity Act threw a little bit of a wrench into that neat little arrangement, because we had to review people's responsibilities and make sure that people were earning the same wage for the same jobs done, right? You've, over time, these relationships have become cemented together, and they move together. It may not necessarily be that in order to get an employee to replace somebody who's leaving, that the salary commanded by the person there now is even remotely competitive. So what I'm finding I have to do is, I look at the marketplace and say, I just lost a guy for 90 grand. I don't think we can even begin to offer more than 74 for that position. Will we get somebody as hardworking and as, frankly, adept as him? Probably not. Probably not, because they're applying for those other jobs closer to Boston. Do we need to be competitive with the Hollistons of the world and the Dovers? No. We'll never get there. But we just have to be mindful of the fact that your employees for many years before I started here either didn't get a COLA, or their steps were frozen, or they made any number of sacrifices to help you balance the budget. The effects of that have been compounded. So now, when we look out into the bigger world and we try to hire people into positions, we try to organize government to be more efficient, we're stuck. We're stuck in the titles and in the ranges of compensation that are available to us to fill those titles. So at some point, within the next three-year time horizon, it may be time to look at your chart again, because if you don't, we'll just have more and more articles coming onto the warrant to fix things as we try to staff up and address the problems that we face. I just, you know, we try really hard to make sure that we're being transparent, and it's a really important, I know it's super important value to you, it's super important value to me. I try to do everything on the up and up and in the open. I feel like I've explained the radio project like 10,000 times and other things, but we don't always get a chance to have that jam session where we're drafting language together to go into the warrant.
Yeah.
And I think if we have an earlier deadline, we'll get to that. It might make, I just think it'd make a ton of sense if you passed the policy. I can draft one if you want.
Can throw that on the next agenda to discuss it in more detail.
Like, for instance, I, economic development coordinator, you know, I mean, I imagine that would be in the building department, and I know there's a number of applicants that come in that literally have no idea what is expected of them. And, you know, I don't know, if we looked at that, would an additional $5,000 provide an, you know, an additional opportunity for someone to be an advocate for someone who's looking to do business in town, right? These are the things. I'm not opposing any of this. I'm trying to vet, and maybe in a more deliberative way, see if we can improve on, frankly, you know, a solid program. So replaying in my mind what I said, I don't know what was so offensive, but that was not the intent.
Yeah, I did, I apologize for taking offense, if that's a thing in 2020.
It's going to be now.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I would never ask you to rubber stamp something, I guess is my point. I don't operate this way in order to compress your timeframe so that you can't deliberate. I operate this way because I feel pressure to get something done that I think is needed, and then I'm kind of stuck. Like, if I bring it to you, it's too fast, but if I don't bring it to you, I don't get something done that I need to get done. So it's kind of a lose-lose.
No, it's.
I'd rather be criticized for going too fast and getting it done than failing to do something I thought needed to be done.
I get it.
I'm going to make a suggestion that's probably not too popular. We met every week during the crisis. I saw that. I'm not suggesting.
Not during baseball season.
Every week forever and ever, and that. But do we want to pick up the pace at all? Do you think that would help plug some of the gap?
In a window where the warrant is coming and we know we need to act on it, yeah, maybe you throw an extra one in or two, right?
Yeah.
You know, what the hell, I'll say it again. Maybe we'd look at the Selectmen pay, if everyone's getting paid around here. If we're meeting as often as we are, I think to attract candidates, you know, you need to look at that, and I know.
But meeting extra wouldn't have solved one of the issues with the building inspector leaving. That just happened, right?
Yeah.
You know? So we've been deliberated for the last three weeks, and he's at a bind this week. Fair point.
Yeah.
That whole conversation, I'm just so triggered. I need a safe place. I'm leaving. I'm just kidding.
We bang a gong and get through the last three items on the issue?
All right, so we've taken care of the reviewing time, November 14, special town meeting. We need to approve the minutes.
All right, move that we approve the regular meeting minutes for October 6, 2020?
Check it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for the same date, October 6, 2020, and retain.
Check it again.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your report?
I will go as fast as I can.
I could get triggered again.
You could trigger it from everyone.
But I wrote it down, so I would go fast. COVID cases briefly increased to six in town over the last week, but they are on their way back down as people complete their quarantine periods. And there have been no new cases in several days.
What's been the peak number at any given time?
I actually think six may have been one of the highest numbers we've ever had, active all at the same time. I think at one point, we may have gotten to double digits for like two or three days back in, actually, we peaked here before the rest of the state, more like end of March. We may have had 11 or 12 at one point, but six is unusual because it's been zero for weeks. But we've had no new cases in several days. Across the Commonwealth, they are going up. I looked at the numbers to be careful about it. It's absurd, because the number of tests oscillates, and therefore, the number of positive cases is oscillating. And you have to be a statistician, you would have to draw a line, a trend line, that captures the overall trend. There is one chart in the state's dashboard that's a little bit concerning, and if you go deep into the document, the positivity rates among individuals tested, which is not the same thing as the total number of tests done. Some persons may be tested multiple times, and they're going to get any number of negative results after a positive result. So it's the one person and that one person testing positive at least once, that rate has been steadily climbing and is now in the high fours, low fives percentage.
So which is different from that 1.1% number that's.
I think, you know, I don't really like to criticize the governor, but I think he's all washed up about this. This is not the way to track it. You don't track the one person taking multiple tests. That is a false result. I want to know if you went that one time and got a positive result, and then, so you're a case.
Regardless of how many tests you took.
Exactly. And that looks like it's closer to 5%, and that's a little bit concerning. Public health officials today say there is no one hotspot or form of transmission that's jumping out at them. Halloween, the Board of Health has met, discussed the topic. They're following the state's guidance and CDC guidance, which is exercise all necessary precautions, but go ahead and have a good time. We don't name holidays. We don't get overly ginned up about any of the holidays. We're here to help people. My only request is, and it's all only a request, look, if you don't want to draw attention to yourself, don't have 100 people over for an indoor party. That would be the wise thing to do these days. More important, I'm going to pass a document around, because it is brand new, and it is something that the board needs to be familiar with. Can you pass it around? The board.
That's us. Maybe us. Could be.
The state-certified free cash for the town of Douglas at 2.725 million, so to be precise, $2,725,870. We had a year-to-year rollover, so in anticipation of possibly being cut by the state on our various revenue sources, we held back and didn't spend all of it on capital and rolled it over from one year to the next. So that balance carried forward. And then this itemization that Gene has provided is where the sources of those overages were, and it's important for everybody to understand that while 2.7 is a nice number for Douglas, some of that is the result of being very conservative and estimating revenues, particularly motor vehicle excise. So that came in much higher. Licenses and permits includes building fees that also had some activity that improved that number up. So overall, the revenues that came in that were not part of the budget, I thought she provided a total, she didn't, is the total of, oh, no, it's the top number, not the bottom line number. It's 53656690. That's revenues over what we had budgeted. In terms of expenditures or total turnbacks to the town by the department heads and the various line items in the budget, we turned back $824,181. That's a very good number for a turnback. Just be mindful of the fact that school transportation, because the schools were closed during the pandemic, especially the special ed portion, that money was turned back. So that's 338474. That's not going to happen again, so you shouldn't plan on that ever happening again.
Unless it's salamanders.
Right. And the rest of these items are pretty small. You can see that on the salary lines, though. Regardless of what we've done with this, that, or the other position, because of churn during the year, we actually turned back $128,551. So that's free cash. It still puts you in a very strong position. It means you can afford what we've asked for for capital, and you are actually have a lot more free cash as your rainy day fund if the state eventually does have to cut you. Doesn't look like they're moving to, but it's always out there, as long as they're this far short on revenues. This past week, we also got our final MIA premiums for property and casualty insurance. And, you know, the number is up. And what concerns me the most is workers' comp. The premium's gone from $93,000 to $115,000, which is a massive increase. It is unsustainable.
Why?
And we've had a lot of claims. We're generating, almost all of those claims are being generated by the school department. They're coming from interactions with students in difficult situations. So there's sometimes you just can't prevent that. You know, there's no amount of training that will help you deal with that. But their premium for workers' comp on the school side is $82,000. On the town side, it's $26,000. Just remembering that public safety, they're on a different insurance plan, they're on the Chub for IOD. That went up, too, because we had some IOD claims this year. But we're going to have to, I will have to sharpen my pencil and try to figure out what we're going to do. Either there's some combination of training, prevention, and maybe even looking at, you know, another carrier, just to keep it competitive.
Bubble wrap.
All right, quick rundown of our grant status. The town has achieved MVP designation, that's municipal vulnerability preparedness. Remember those rather torturous sessions we all sat through? Well, we got certified. What that means is, we can go get MVP action grants, which top out at $2 million. You have to address something that's going to arise from climate change or the weather patterns as a result of climate change. The next grant round is in the spring of 2021. We will have something in the mix for that. The town has applied for an industrial accident training grant, $9100, targeted at those areas statewide that, where injuries have been identified as being a pattern. We've applied for community compact best practices grant for information technology. We're seeking $24,000 for server redundancy, uninterrupted power supply, and virtualization. We are more than halfway done that project in this room. So that rack that was full of staticky, noisy machinery with lots of blinking lights, it's down to two. What we're going to do is get two more. That's the redundancy internally, and then virtualize that and up to the cloud with versioning and security. And that would complete our transition from a 1990s municipality to a 2020 municipality. It's a much more targeted application than last year, so our chances of success should be much better. We're pursuing a MIA grant for disinfection equipment, including handheld and backpack style sprayers for both the town and the schools. It's $9,800. As I mentioned, e-permitting is going along. We should hit the go-live date, because of his departure, Marcus. We should hit the go-live date, because of his departure, Mark is accelerating the process. But all of our major forms have already been uploaded and created, and so we're starting to beta test internally, applications and messaging, and kind of trying to recreate the real world in that environment. And hopefully, by the holidays, people will be able to interact now on their computer and get their building permit. And last but not least, the community garden finally kind of wrapped up in the cold weather. We produced just about 154 pounds of fresh vegetables for the food pantry, and comparing that to the pricing at the supermarket, it's about $390 worth of food. The donation that started the thing was 250, so I guess we made our money back and made some nice donations to, of fresh vegetables to the pantry. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. You got something, Tim, I can tell. I can see it.
It's bursting.
It's coming out.
I'm looking at the, I'm going to do it. The letter to MMA that spurred a little discussion with your colleagues, I'm just curious as to, if you heard any additional feedback that you want to share.
What's the last thing the board saw? Did you see the exchange with the town administrator of Atoll?
I did, yes.
Yeah, I think that was the last thing.
Where he thought we were off base?
Right.
Yeah.
And where I corrected him. I got a nice thank you for the correction.
He was shilling for that worth? I mean, thought we were off base.
Probably, but.
Shilling?
I mean, I think they understood, once the position was clarified, they got it, and I haven't heard back anything from there. I got a couple of selectmen from smaller towns out west that called, and Brookfield, I think was one of them.
All right, so we're going to.
Glad that you guys had done that.
You're big time in Brookfield, huh?
I didn't know we mailed Brookfield.
You mailed it to everybody. You mailed it, they did get out there. I mean, lots of people saw it.
Yeah, well, that was the intent, right? To start the discussion.
Good circulation.
Good, all right.
That's that regional.
Yeah.
Yeah, see?
We bind people together. That's what we do.
From Brookfield to Orange, they all have a theme.
Berry to Wary.
Good.
Anything else? Anybody who got a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Have a good.